Activity issues from the hotel.
Okay. Let's start.
All right.
I pause the order of the committee of the whole board meeting at 6:31 PM in the Orton with Urquerra High School. Please call the roll.
Mr. Rissman?
Here.
Dr. O'Gan?
Here.
Mr. Arkin?
Here.
Mr. Gurs?
Here.
Dr. Livingston?
Here.
Mr. Reinhaus?
Here.
And Ms. Wensley.
And I move to enter this session for the purpose of discussing employment, employment compensation, discipline of the performance of these officials, employees of the district, or legal counsel for the district, and independent contractors and specific volunteers, including grand testimony and complaint filed against an employee or against legal counsel for the district to determine its validity. However, committing to consider a decrease in compensation for the living employee of a public body that is subject to the local government, issued transparency act may not be closed and shall be opened to public and posted and held in accordance with Act 5 by LCS 122 C1. Collective negotiating matters between the district and its employees or representatives of the liberation concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees, 5 by LCS 122 C2, and litigation when action against affecting or on behalf of a particular public body has been filed and is pending before court or administrative tribunal or when the public body finds that action is powerful or imminent, in which case the basis for the finding shall be recorded and entered into the minutes of the closing meeting, 5 by LCS 122 C1. Do I have a second? Second, please call the roll.
Dr. O'Gan?
Here.
Mr. Arkin?
Yes.
Mr. Gurs?
Here.
Mr. Rissman?
Yes.
Mr. Reinhaus?
Yeah.
Dr. Livingston?
Yes.
Let us reconvene from the session and on our first order of business is public comments and let's sign up for public comments, Lisa.
No public comments for tonight.
We will move on to four or five minutes. I know to approve the April 20th, 2025, the April 11th notice is presented. Are there any corrections or adjustments that need to be made? Very nice. We'll have a second.
Second.
All those opinions that I.
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 Any goes. The minutes are approved. And now we will turn to our business for the evening, which is a lot of topics about finance. Jonathan, how's your report for you?
Great. So yeah, so. Our services is up here today. I've heard a lot of the Chinese state, the tri district consortium, I think this is the. We are asking for reauthorization in this place. We have a host of others. So what I'm going to do, Tony, is sort of introduce each one of these items point by point as we go. I'm turning over the finance section to you and your team to just go ahead and call on your members as the very section. Okay?
Sure. The tri district technology consortium agreement has been in place. It was initially approved December of 2016. And then the agreements are three-year agreements that allow for two one-year extensions. And we, all three districts have seen a lot of positive that comes out of this data sharing agreement. And we, back in 2020, had entered a new agreement. And now those years have, you know, the initial contract have lapsed and we are now looking for the approval for the one-year acceptance. And Eric, if you have any want to comment on kind of the nature of the agreement, it will turn over to our director of tech, Eric Cackle.
Thanks, Tony. Hi, everybody. That the agreement basically lets us work with the districts in a combined way to purchase things. So for example, when we were purchasing Zoom, we got a significant discount because we pulled our user base together. It's things like that that this agreement lets us do and it has zero cost to us. And it seems like it's been very, very helpful when we need it. It isn't called upon a lot since COVID is over. It really was. We used it quite a bit back then, but it is nice to have that tool in our tool belt should we need to, you know, call upon it at any given time.
Would we receive deeper discounts from including more districts in the agreement?
It's, it's possible that if more districts were in the agreement, then the purchasing power would be greater. And the difficulty would lie in the management of the group. At that point, we'd be nearing similar size to the purchasing cooperative, which is an extended amount of work. If you remember last year, when Mike Karski was here, we were in charge of the purchasing cooperative for the local foods purchasing group. And it was a substantial amount of work that she would carry every year. Given the, what we know is on our plate for the next few years going forward on the technology side. As project two starts to get built up, I would be nervous to say that something we, as we brought more districts in that we could realistically manage the workload of. And then also kind of with anything, the more you bring into a cooperative, the less your voice carries sometimes. So we've got a good, feel like this is a good balance for our district because we have our two feeders. That do purchasing with us. I mean, it sets the table for kind of the whole data sharing between the three districts as well.
So that we don't really use a whole lot since COVID, that this is something that we, so I'm just trying to understand more, but the. Daily or weekly, you know, kind of burden would be managing, you know, this, this cooperative. How often are we making purchases through it? Is that just aggregating volume for like Wi-Fi or for other. You know, the members of the technology for purchasing. So I mean, how often does that happen on a regular basis? That we would need to, you know, manage like a cooperative.
Recently, we've, we've basically purchased just the Zoom licenses right now. I did talk with 97 about including some other local districts. And 97 is doing most of the management and the communication with the vendors. And 97 was flat out saying they're not interested in being a much larger cooperative in this particular sense. So this is just basically 90, 97 and 200, but we have not purchased anything besides recently, besides the annual Zoom licenses.
Questions? So, so we've only used this to buy Zoom, basically?
Currently, yes, and it leaves us open to do other cooperative things with them if we find common ground on it. So it's kind of like having it in our tool belt. We may use it some years besides Zoom, some years we might not. It all depends what comes out there and what we need to purchase. And if we can find the synergies, then we'll basically, you know, move forward with those and bring them to you as necessary.
So yeah, we got another item coming up regarding laptop purchases is that, does the administration say, hey, see if we can leverage this purchase through the consortium? Or does that not even come up on here going after those units?
We talked about it, but we buy different machines typically. And so some of those purchases aren't really going to yield. I mean, some of the prices on the Chromebooks are so low right now and the margins are so low. We get a pretty good deal when we're buying a thousand of them. I don't think we could do much better with Lumpy 97 and 90 into it. We could investigate a little bit more, but I've worked with CDW. In fact, I worked at CDW initially in my career way back in the day. And the margin on these things are so low as it is, I'm not sure if the cooperative would actually be a benefit to us, but it's something we could look at moving forward.
How much did we save buying our Zoom services through the consortium versus having bought them independently?
Well, at the numbers we were, we were purchasing, I would probably say that the costs were going to be at least 10 to 12% more. Because instead of having 100 license, let's say we had 500 licenses, which put up to a better tier and so the price came down.
Okay, sounds pretty good. Okay, now editorial, right, editorial comment. Your memo states, this agreement was instrumental in the shared success of remote learning. I would argue there was nothing successful about it. As far as a kid who had to go through it, I'd probably just rephrase that sentence. So that's my statement about that.
Thanks.
Just a minor point that the, it probably would be wise to have the actual agreement, say, technology consortium, instead of just consortium. Just in case there happens to be another consortium agreement between the three districts and you would have to go back and change that.
Because of, we're doing a one-year extension, we kept the titling the same as the historical contract had been. But I was thinking something very similar is when it comes time to rewrite the new contract after the extension years are up. It would be a more appropriate title to work technology in.
So I know we've only used it for Zoom, but there are other numerous technologies that are shared amongst the districts. Whether that be subscription or time attendance kind of stuff. There are a lot of vendors that the last couples tend to rely on as common vendors for technology. We explored anything other than Zoom to leverage the volume of this consortium?
I'll let Eric speak to that. I know in some areas you've mentioned time and attendance tracking. There's not a common system between the three districts that is currently in place. We use a program called Red Rover. I know depending on the type of tracking that's being done at 97, some of theirs is still done manually, like pen and paper. So for some of those, it's just there hasn't been a match and it doesn't make sense for us to then want to investigate a new solution. Because what we have is working for us. But Eric, I, I know you all meet regularly. So just thought I'd turn it back over to you to see any other comments on that.
Yeah, we, we meet every month and we talk about, you know, where we can, you know, have our synergies and. Have our synergies and the last one we talked about was Raptor. So we've been embracing Raptor for security. And. One of, both of those districts, 90 and 97 both use that. So we're looking, after we get over this initial, you know, startup. Maybe rolling that into something like this and other places where, you know, we have common areas. It's kind of hard because the high school has different needs than an elementary school. And for example, District 90 uses iPads. So we don't buy many iPads, but they buy them for every kid. So there's not a lot of common ground, but where we find them in these meetings monthly and we're doing these purchases, we definitely do have those conversations. But I would probably say the next one is most likely going to be Raptor.
Any other questions? Let's move on to.
Okay, um, next, we are, you know, throughout the course of the year, we've talked about. Different opportunities we've had to save money in our technology budget by. Various purchasing that we've made. We are now looking for permission to. Spend $149,000 on a refresh of staff computers and then. Just over 69,000 for a new multi-function copier. These are built into projections for next year's budget, so they're known expenses. But we've saved enough money this year to purchase those in advance. And then we'll be able to alleviate next year's budget by doing so. One thing to note as well. We. Timing is always an issue. So just to explain our relationship with CDW. When we had the quote generated for us, there was not a rebate. We were kind of in between rebate cycles. CDW, when we go to make a purchase, will always give us the best available pricing. And we, we actually, in a sense, get to double dip often. If they give us a quote that included a rebate, but let's say it expired a few days before the board meeting where we got formal approval. They will honor that. And then in the same token that if they give us a price and then between now and the approval, we get a better price option. They give us the best price available throughout that time period as well. So we'll be able to purchase a little bit more than a hundred of the devices. Eric, I think you had that total number there, but it wouldn't change the total cost of the purchase, but we'd be getting more machines. So it would actually reduce even more of next year's budget.
So I heard this correctly. We are, these were scheduled to be budgeted and purchased in next year's budget.
Yes.
Right? But we're under budgeted in this regard, in this area, this year. Enough that we can afford to buy these.
Correct.
Under the 24, 25 year. What happens, I mean, what happens to the old machines? Do they get traded in? Or do they get refurbished? What, what happens to them? I mean, you're replacing a hundred computers. What happens to the old hundred computers?
The old machines basically are four to five years old and so they're not worth anything. And so we have them into the electronic recycling to be boast of environmentally.
So we recycle them and then Eric, correct me if I'm wrong, but I do believe too that ones that are in good condition. We may keep some of them on site either as loners or to, for the replacement parts. Because we do a lot of the in-house management of our machines. We do our own repairs when we're able to.
We do keep a very small amount of those, yes. Lines sure go to recycling, but we do keep them for parts, some of them. Some of them for an emergency loner, but most of them do go to recycling. Because they're just, it's just a bad machine. And if any of you have used a machine that's really, really old, you know that basically it becomes. Pretty worthless in terms of being productive, but we do keep a small, very small amount of those onsite for various reasons. But we try not to use them for actual. Staff because they're just not effective.
So are we adjusting next year's budget down in technology?
Yes, we will.
See, we, we service.
Sure. We annually bring this item forward to the Board of Education for approval. This is our intergovernmental agreement to provide breakfast and lunch to District 97. We are proposing the noted meal increases. And as noted in the memo, these, the increases are not a reflection of we'll make a profit off of this. These are just reflective of where our costs have grown over the course of the year in the meals that we provide.
So this is, because these are, seem like pretty dramatic. Increases. And so when you say that. Beyond inflation, what are some of the other costs that you. That contribute to this dramatic increase?
The, the big one is that last year. The numbers were held back to see if the inflation would be more temporary and we'd see prices drop down. That obviously, you know, for us, very similar to the kind of our. Citizens here has not been the case at the grocery store. We are also, there's certain local food purchasing programs that have been available through the federal government. That will be sunset and that we won't have access to. So those are really the two driving forces in these changes.
Do we believe this to be causing trouble to the districts?
Yes, 100%.
Do we believe there was money on this?
This is where we feel we will not next year. We, when Jennifer was running her numbers this year, we felt that we. Potentially at the end of the year, maybe lose a little bit of money in the servicing, I decided.
So this is one of those, this damages if they're having a bunch of different jurisdictions. Servicing same, you know, population, right? From a D200 perspective, this only makes sense for us if this costs new order to be nice to do this. Which is unfortunate. It comes to 2017 since that, unless it would get better prices elsewhere. So I think those prices look rather low, considerably. To be entirely honest, I don't know. Want to make sure that we are cautious.
Yeah, it's, no, I agree with you and we, we try to be the best partners we can to District 97 on this. We've been very transparent with them. This has gone to their board first because of the size of the increase. And I, there, I believe internally, they likely did their due diligence to see that while it's a. You know, not an insignificant increase to go out and to hire a third party to come in and buy the food would be more expensive for them. But, but I do agree that, you know, this, this really only makes sense if we're, we're breaking even. And that we're able to provide a good service for their students as well.
Does, does this also though by. By using more, more like the economics of scale that by producing more meals, we're keeping our costs for our students lower? If we were to, if we were to back out of this, would, would the costs go up for the meals for our students?
I, I don't know that they would go up because what, it really, it goes up one more layer than that. And this is where the larger cooperative we talked about with technology comes into play. We are a member of Purchasing Cooperative for Districts that self-service food service themselves. Through us, District 97 is a member. So we're able to then leverage not just the two district purchasing power, but the others when we do our bids. It sometimes, you know, that becomes a very positive bidding situation every year. This is a food, something that gets bid annually. Sometimes you have vendors that don't change and continually win the bid because they're very aggressive in their pricing. Other times you might see Pepsi outbid Coca-Cola for the contract. So it's. But yes, it's, I don't know that we, by not doing this, we'd see our prices go up. I'd say where we really feel the pricing go up would be if we pulled out of the cooperative.
Do we know what D90 does?
I, we have, when I first got here, Director of Food Service was Mike Bukarski. She had talked to D90 about providing meals for them, but they did not feel it was beneficial to them. It's something we can reach out for in the future, but they had not been interested in the past.
D90 doesn't provide, watch.
Good question. So to me, any. Any awareness of how this, these increases are going to affect the actual consumers? Is it, is it assumed that they'll be paying exactly this amount extra for each meal? Or if we know, do we not know yet how they're going to do that on their things?
I, that I am unsure of. Because that is something that they would pass along. I, I don't know if they would raise their pricing up. No, for their students that are free or reduced lunch. It, it should not, outside of. Whatever the rate that the government sets for next year would be, it would not have an impact. But then for the students and families that purchase the meals daily, I have not heard what their plan is.
Their website has their current prices a little bit higher than these prices.
And just for, for Catherine and Josh, you're not going to take action on these six items tonight, but in two weeks, maybe go with them. So let's move on to D, the excavation of the geothermal. The electrical line costs.
Sure. For our returning board members, you heard several times it mentioned with our updates on project two that. We had a situation, we were continuing to try to strategize through in having a large. Comment line that runs down our mall. And just to provide a little bit of timeline for our new board members. We had set our control budget for project two at just under 102 million. Had went out to bid, came in right, actually just below that number that we had projected. During this time, the original thought for geothermal was that it could go under where the diskus area is. In the, just outside the mall, when we did the testing. And so what the output was, that it wasn't going to produce enough energy for the portion of project two. The footprint of the new building. But Bergy, who is doing this project, had proposed a solution of the football field, which if you've seen our football field, we are going with. And, but what that meant is that we would be crossing a different location in the mall for the first time. When you have to test for the depth of where that line is, because of the rules of it being a comment line. We can't hire Gilbane or they can't go hire a subcontractor to drill in and test the depth of the line. You have to work with ComEd. ComEd comes out, does their own testing. It is one of the. The ways they protect the integrity of their power system. And that line doesn't just service the local area, but as we previously, previously discussed, services the hospital as well. It took a while for ComEd to be responsive. I know we've talked about that in a couple of ways. ComEd and Nycor are not always the most responsive when you try to engage them. We did engage our attorneys to help. Move things along and ComEd responded. They put a new project manager. On this situation and since then, he's been very responsive. Feel like he's been a great partner to us. What was found is that both for the depth of where this power line is, as well as. The thermal activity that's going to come from our piping as we push that energy back into the new building. They needed more space between that line and the power line. It also meant that the, their line would have to be insulated in a certain manner. So we've been, our team has been strategizing with their team and their engineers. We've gotten a solution in place now. ComEd historically has been pretty close to their budgets when they did this for. The project one area, it was more expensive, but they came in a little under what they had projected. But the cost for this, we believe will be 117,648. Potentially could be a little bit lower. For their contract, it could be a little bit higher as well. Jeff, Jeff is not feeling super well, but he's on Zoom. Jeff, I don't know if you have anything to add?
Tony, you did a, you did a great job on the explanation. The thermal activity is, is really what ComEd is worried about. To kind of explain that a little bit, you can imagine an extension cord. That has too many things plugged into it, or you even put a piece of furniture on the cord and you're pressing it down into the carpet. That creates a. A hotter condition for those lines. And any kind of heat like that reduces the amount of capacity that they can run through their line. That is a 138,000 volt transmission line. So they're very concerned about it. We're, we're, like Tony said, we're working with the engineers and we have a solution. That they're willing to work with as well.
So just, just to be clear. When you say that. You were originally informed that the transmission line was at a deeper elevation compared to. Where we first encountered it. Was that from, that was from ComEd?
It was based on the conversations we had internally. As Jeff and I were thinking about some of the ways. To talk through this and try to help explain it, I think we realized that. Burger Choice there was, was not the best because it, it wasn't intended to read as if we were misled. But because we're unable to test that depth until ComEd comes up and does that. Through conversations, we all, when we say we believe, we believed, architects, Gilbane, all believe that we'd be looking at a, a very similar depth. To what we experienced in project one. And due to just the slight difference, and then as Jeff said, probably more importantly, the thermal activity of the line itself. Has led for the, the need to now go under instead of over.
So. Want to hear it. Nothing even physically changed from the minute we broke around another football field. To now that line and the ComEd line. And so that's why we're trying to get at is, you know, this is $115,000 and potentially could have been avoided if we had had ComEd. Come and test the depth of the line to inform us ahead of time. I don't know why we decided to go ahead, just a general understanding from the different parties involved. Like this seems like.
Um, I, I wouldn't say it was preventable. We could have known the cost sooner had we been able to get a response from ComEd. But we'd still have to have these lines connect and we'd have to cross that line. One way or another, and there wouldn't. There wouldn't be a cost savings in having the lines run further down, say, you know, if we ran it closer to. The prior section to go back over, there wouldn't be a cost savings. We just didn't, it took longer to know what this cost would be than its unexpected cost. So I said.
I, I find this frustrating. Again, I think. Kind of to follow up on what Josh, Josh has asked, you know. If somewhere along the line. When we were considering the geothermal. Field is, we know that the, these.
Field is we know that the these had to be connected. So I I I'm I'm confused as to is this the entire cost for for that, you know, dig and connect? Because I think that there should have been something originally an amount in the budget and. For is almost a worst case scenario, um if we didn't have full information. Uh because, you know, again, the. This this comes as a change in in uh in I think what you're asking for is to take this. Hundred and seventeen thousand dollars out of the contingency of project two. And this is really not project two, this is a separate project, we voted on it separately. And and we and I know that there's been other changes and and other additional costs. Uh and I just felt like the way that this this has been managed.
It it um now part of and uh situations like this are part of the reason we carry a contingency for the unexpected. Um unexpected occurrences that do come up. This isn't, um just to clarify, we're not trying to take it out of project two contingency because it's um. This is where we have more contingency dollars. It is about the location um where the work will happen are in the footprint of uh the Gilbane contract. So if the work will actually happen in the area that Gilbane is working in, uh not in the area that Berge was working in.
Berge's doing the work.
No, no, this comment is doing the works.
No, I understand.
Comment's doing the work and Gilbane is managing it.
Okay, but ComEd's not going to hook up, do the the hookup of our thermal system to our.
No, that that is, uh that gets hooked up at uh so Berge, remember the first thing they did was install the vault?
Right.
So now ComEd or ComEd, I'm sorry, now Gilbane and their subcontractors actually do the hookup. From what Berge has in place into the building. So this is um all of this work falls into the work that Gilbane is managing.
So if I could just sort of replay that story, if I'm sorry, I'm sorry, but I'm just. I'm not, I I guess what I'm what what I'm getting frustrated with is to why this was this was foreseeable. And why these numbers come to us now rather than beginning of the project. Which is what I was going to ask to try to restate what I think I understood happened. So the initial design from Berge assumes that the bulk of the geothermal wells will be drilled north of the football field.
Yes.
And. Would be crossing the tug somewhere north of the football field along the mall. Cause the tug runs north, south along the full length of the mall.
Mm hmm.
Okay. So after do the initial testing of the wells, we discovered that it's not quite productive enough on that. Area north of football field, we're going to have to actually drill in the football field to get the most productive wells. At that point, the place at which you want to cross the tug is not to the north. Is actually effectively according to this map, it's straight across from the football field.
Yep.
Okay. Now, in your prior experience with project one, you observed that the tug was buried at depth of. Something north of seven feet deep, I'm assuming?
Yeah, uh Jeff, I'll let you uh speak to that.
Yeah, it was it was approximately eight feet uh deep, roughly.
Okay, so the tug is eight feet deep. And in the initial Berge design, assuming that we're going to put the most of the wells north of the football field. That presumed crossing of the tug was going to happen at a certain depth, what was that depth?
That depth has to remain, at least the top of the pipe has to remain forty-two inches below the surface of the ground.
Okay, so we were going to go over the top originally of the tug?
Yes.
And when we were going to go over the top at that time, did we already know that that distance of eight feet minus forty-two inches? That was going to be adequate to satisfy ComEd's thermal concerns?
No, that is something that has come up. And once ComEd engaged and reviewed the plans, um they and that is part of what um, you know. Has been ongoing for the last six months, really now with ComEd is the um. The troubleshooting of the problem, you know, that, you know, we need their permission to cross this line either over or under it. Uh and then they had to come out, do their analysis, um and uh. We knew uh once they said we had to go under instead of over, we knew that there would be um some kind of a change or costs associated with it. Uh but we did not, um we didn't get the cost from ComEd until.
Uh it was last Wednesday.
Okay, last Wednesday and um.
At the time you though we were going to go over the top of it. Um did we also at that time expect that ComEd was going to have some kind of concerns or expected charges from wanting to cross their line?
Oh, so okay, I can speak to it. Sorry, Jeff, I wasn't sure if that was you or me going to take it. Um I I don't want to say we knew they'd have concerns, um but the without having them. Engaging with us on the problem, uh that was um. Our belief was that it would be a little bit simpler than what the solution that we got ended up being.
Okay, so even had we not had to use the football field, there was always this chance of. ComEd may not like us doing this, ComEd may place certain requirements on us, ComEd, that could include charges. We've always known that was out there. So is there a contingency to the geothermal project funding? Yeah, I'm going on memory here, but in the same way there's contingency for P two, is there something similar for the geothermal project?
No, I'm and again, it's this is a and I feel like this will probably be confusing. Because it's that midpoint of where the two separate projects connect. Uh but um again, i- it's it's a cost that comes to project two. Because we've chosen to do the work for geothermal is is the best way I can say it.
Okay.
Uh and there was, um we did carry um. Uh some contingency um in that budget as well as in the owner costs for um for this work and then other potential work that could happen. I can't say we have a specific dollar amount for, okay, we set this aside for uh, you know, this goes wrong or that goes wrong. We we have more like a percentage of general contingency. Uh uh some of that was used for asbestos, uh and now we uh we have not tapped into much of the contingency at all. Uh there is, if you remember, one point, just under one point six uh million at the last.
Okay, so whether we cross the tug up around uh the cafeteria or down by the football field, in either case. Uh the budgetary geo-fence, so to speak. Places that cost in P two.
Yes.
In either of it.
Yep.
And my last question, I'm sorry, uh so um. Remind us of the current contingency budget for P two and how much has been consumed and how much remains?
Uh I've got the remaining, uh Jeff, I don't know if you happen to have this starting, I can find it really quick. Uh remaining is uh one point five seven four million, uh remaining.
That's really close, yeah.
Yep, and I I believe we started it just was it one point six or one point seven with our starting contingency?
Yeah, it was up up towards one point eight.
Okay, um yeah, and uh if you remember, when we started the demolition, we tapped into a little bit of it. Um uh with uh some of the extra asbestos that was found uh with some of the hidden wall.
Okay, thank you. So. Um so I I just, you know, it's 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 worded as a proposal, but it's not really a proposal, right? It's more of an ultimatum, they're not competing bids or anything like that, uh we're looking at, so it's really. I think the verdicts is the power is sort of kind of established here with ComEd saying this is what it's going to cost, guys. And I just, I I'm a little uncomfortable with looking at the the emergence of geothermal, uh you know, uh. Energy and the potential for there to be a cottage industry for the utility companies to just say. Actually, you know what we're going to do, we're going to make money off of every time this is installed and like make sure that this stuff's insulated. And here's what it's going to cost and there's no no competing bids and no way to say, yeah, that's a good deal, but that's not a good deal. Is that fair?
Uh you know, eh the concern is fair, what I will say is because we, they've been pretty transparent with us in having. Um uh their um the crews that they'll be working with, working with our Gilbane team. Um I it uh we didn't know the cost, but in reviewing the proposal, um uh. It it has seemed like like an appropriate, fair number.
So if we, you know, if at the beginning of the whole geothermal project, instead of us building the geothermal wells. For the line to run at depth such that it would run over the ComEd line. If we had started the project with any deeper depth, such that the whole time we knew we would be running underneath the ComEd line. Would we be facing these same costs?
Uh I I'm going to speculate the best I can because I'm unsure a hundred percent. But thinking about where each individual well is to go deeper and run the pipe even deeper to go under. I would think we could never break even to this number, that the extra work for all of those would have been more than our total. If I'm if I'm understanding correctly.
Yeah, that's that's what I'm trying to is is right, I want to understand this is this is additional cost in a sense of, you know. If we had known ahead of time, right, we wouldn't be paying, you know, this to correct a potential error, right? Um so right, if I if I basically I'm asking if this costs you to run it at a lower depth the whole time? As opposed to just only going underneath the ComEd line?
Are you asking, I just want to clarify the question, that the entire well field would be at a lower depth? So that it would be accessible to this, you know, it would be it would be able to run at a lower depth underneath the ComEd line, is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Oh, that's a question for Berge about how those well fields are designed and brought. I will say that for whatever this, actually Jeff, you might be able to speak to that. Um we had a conversation, Jeff, when you and I were observing the field a little while ago about the accessibility of those of of each well. If one needs, if if a line needs to be stopped and repaired or something occurred along the way, I I bet that's linked to your to your question. Jeff, can you track what I'm I'm going at right there?
Uh yes, I I think you're you're relating it to the depths of the uh of each well. Um yeah, the the top of those wells sits at about five feet below the surface. Of the uh of the football field itself, the turf. So any any damage to any of those wells, you have to dig up to get that fixed.
So I guess this hundred and fifteen, hundred and seventeen thousand dollars, right? Uh it wasn't anticipated if about this project. So my question is, has had we done the the diligence, waited for ComEd to tell us the depth? And the ComEd told us the depth that we would have been required to run our line at? Um and we had done from the beginning, gone deeper the whole way as opposed to just start going down a hill right underneath the ComEd line? Uh even though this wasn't something that we anticipated at the beginning. I'd be curious that it would have been more expensive to run it a deeper depth the whole time all along.
I it it is my gut, but like I said, I am speculating and and I hate speculating, so it's something I could ask. Um the other thing I'll say is, I would believe, and Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong. Even if we were trying to run the ex the exchange line that that would go back in, um. Fifty feet below the ground, because we're still crossing the path of that easement with ComEd. ComEd would still have to come out, do the approval, uh now they may say, okay, you're so low that you don't have to insulate it. Uh but uh I would, my my best estimate here is that. We would still be significantly more expensive than this hundred and seventeen.
That I agree, it's it would be significantly more expensive to put two hundred and forty wells deeper. Than than crossing the line where we are right now.
Well, it's deeper, also.
There's I.
I'm just saying, right, because then it changed the whole calculation.
It it does, um it also, if I remember from our initial talks with Berge, going too deep. Creates a more uh five hundred feet was the um. Kind of a comfort zone of where the wells would significantly run properly. Going deeper than that creates more of a risk of failure as well.
Um how does this impact timeline?
Uh it uh will not impact timeline, uh it will will stay on schedule.
So we have a solution that's now agreed to by ANSCO, ComEd, Gilbane, Berge, the administration. Any other party, any other partner that needs to be part of this?
Uh.
We're still waiting on.
The Board of Education, because of the cost, just um we uh um per our contract, when we have a contract this large. It um absolutely must come before the board for.
Um it's great that we are now taking engagement from ComEd and it's great to hear that we have a ComEd partner that is. With us, is there anything else um you anticipate in the next year with the the rest of project two? That would require um this kind of ComEd engagement? And just sort of thinking ahead, troubleshooting of any other ComEd issues that we might want to bring forward?
Uh Jeff, I I'm going to let you take that one because I I know we will be, um you know, as we. Quote unquote, it makes it sound too simple, but turning the lights on when the new building's up will definitely involve ComEd. Um but uh Jeff, for if you have more specific thoughts, um I'll turn it over to you.
Um I'm I'm going to say we don't see anything that uh would be an issue at this point. Um we have, you know, worked through all of the the uh connections and how we're going to bring the ComEd lines into the building. Um we should be in good shape. I I'd like to point out that just real quickly, I know this this may not sound um. How do I say it? We've never done a geothermal field before. So this this whole issue with crossing their line, if it was some other type of. Uh utility crossing their line, it wouldn't be a big deal, but the thermal activity is what got ComEd. Uh very interested in that piqued their interest. Um we have never done that a geothermal field before and this this came as a little bit of a surprise to us. So. I'd like to say we could have forewarned them, we could have foreseen it, but we didn't.
Well, so I mean, but Berge's done with geothermal.
I didn't hear the question.
Hasn't Berge engaged in geothermal construction before?
Yes.
So that's why we hired us as consultants for this project, right? Obviously, you know, I don't know how to do plumbing in my house, that's why I hire a plumber. Uh the, you know, the concern is that this was the that this was overlooked at the beginning. In the day, right, maybe not to uh to the sector that this is playing, right? There's there's, you aren't being given an option here, there is no more cost effective solution. And we have a large degree of sunk costs in the geothermal project, so there's really no option other. Uh but trying to find a, you you know, that. I it's just, it's it's, you know, it's frustrating that had we been waiting for ComEd at the beginning, you know, maybe we maybe wouldn't have. Done this, we would have gone a different route, uh and just decided to move ahead. I'm curious, who who's, you know, it sounds like there was a some sort of agreement or. From Gilbane and ANSCO and all of that, most likely the ComEd line would not be a problem. But it still is not sitting well to me that that there's no one to be held accountable for this, there's no party um to hold out against us.
I'm trying to see that you had your hand up, that you have a question?
Sorry, I'm on my phone so I can hear, so I forget that I have two things. Um though Jeff answered part of my question uh about is this really a ComEd electrical issue? Or it could potentially be a utility, you're saying Jeff had a guideline and something that would not um have been the same challenge that we're seeing with the ComEd line?
That's correct.
Okay, okay, and then the other piece, was that Fred, I'm sorry, Jeff, go ahead.
Um I know that in the past, we have um, we have crossed that line with a utility such as a fiber optic line. No issue, we even have a vault sitting down in the ground next to it. Pretty close, well, it's a little bit away from it, but about twelve feet away, but we crossed that line with that with no issue. Pretty close, well, it's a little bit away from it, but about twelve feet away, but we crossed that line with that with no issue.
Okay. This is, and then I think with that Fred speaking just earlier, um, relative to just kind of understanding that this could have been, you know, did understanding more about this at the beginning, was that your question, Fred?
Yes.
Because I I think so, so Tony and Jeff, in terms of just, you know, reading the information and then listening to the conversation, um, for me, I think what is missing is at the beginning of the project, being able to understand what's, you know, understand the potential risk um from a cost perspective of this particular issue, right? I I hear you that it's something that new because we've not done geothermal before, and I don't know even with Verge, if they've had an issue where it crosses a line like this um with with ComEd. But I think being able to, I I I don't feel like, I feel like it's somewhat of a surprise because I don't feel like I've clearly heard it couched as a kind of potential thing to be determined uh as we as we went along with this project.
I I I would like to say that Verge may have been able to comment on it had they crossed a transmission line in the past. There is a difference between a ComEd transmission line, which controls the grid, uh, which controls many, many city blocks as compared to a uh distribution line from ComEd, which goes down the road and it hits every house, every building, and supplies them the power. This transmission line is is definitely something that you do not cross every day. People, it's very seldom that you see a an issue where you're crossing that. So.
Do you have any writing from any of the parties that the 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 transmission line? That could have been a transmission line would be a problem, uh, whether it be Gilbain or Verge or AnSCO?
I am unsure of that off the top of my head.
Oh, I think we're gonna move it along. I'm just gonna say two things. One is, um, I I don't want to have loss in this conversation, so I mean, the fact that we have a solution uh and you've worked with our partners to to find a solution to what could be a major problem. And so I would appreciate that. Um, and this is exactly why we have one point eight million dollars in contingency um built into Project Two. Things come along, things just like this happen, and we are uncovering costs out of the contingencies that that we've already budgeted for. So, um, any other questions?
I'm just gonna go to the brief and say that, you know, you you said earlier that we knew even if you're crossing that transmission line up by the cafeteria, you have a risk there, there's a big issue. So I guess a little surprising that back in the planning phase, Verge didn't say, and they've done hundreds of these systems, they're the market leader in providing installing these systems. They could have flagged and said, holy cow, guys, this could be a real issue. But I wonder if the fact that uh it's at the handoff between their scope and Gilbain's scope potentially led to them just saying, well, could be a big issue, but it's not my problem. Uh, maybe that was a left hand, right hand problem between Gilbain and Verge, I don't know. But clearly, Verge knew, had to know that this could be, this could be a big deal. So you know, probably probably not gonna sit well that, you know, oh, we're just finding this out now six months because we actually knew, as you said, six months. At the beginning of the plan, we knew this combination. But I but I, you know, I I kind of agree also with what what you're saying, Tim, is that, okay, it's it's regrettable. Uh, big construction problem, projects always have surprises in them. Um, could be worse. And, you know, our decision to go with geothermal for the heating cooling with P two on a combined operating and capital expense basis, nets about three hundred and eighty K of savings over the thirty year life of a project. So now we're gonna save up just a little bit less. Uh, even though this uh additional cost is gonna get allocated to P two rather than the geothermal, um, it's not great what happened, how it happened, but I think we are where we are now. We have to move on with it.
Thanks, man. Uh, so let's move on to the uh E, the high averages, as you talk about the contract with Prom twenty five six.
Same uncontroversial topics, we are bringing our prom contract forward.
You're next, Dave.
Uh, we annually need to bring, uh, almost immediately after uh, the kind of the good single member of Prom is done, we have to get the contract done for next year to uh reserve our space. Um, I, we are looking to uh keep everything very consistent uh with uh the last uh contract we brought forward last year. Um, tickets will remain a hundred and ten dollars per student. The contract itself that you'll um be voting on in two weeks um remains at a sixty eight thousand dollar um uh eight hundred minimum uh number. And um uh, we are, uh, again, given the cost of this, um, it ultimately gets fully funded by the student tickets. Um, the district does not make a profit on this. Um, money that is paid for Prom then uh gets spent on Prom. And um, I don't know if I said it all, but.
Yeah, yeah, you've you've said enough. So thank you.
I I've learned a little more since the first time I worked this part last year.
Real quick, for when this comes back to us, I think the memo makes a couple of references to twenty twenty five Prom, but I think we actually use the same number, six.
Oh, yeah, I see that, yeah.
Because he just recycles those the end contracts.
I have a question. And because uh, and we talked about this last year, my big concern is that Prom is expensive, but ticket price is prohibitive for some of our families, for a lot of top families. And that's just the beginning of the Prom expense. I think a lot of families know that. Um, and like, big concern is that we have kids and families who see that ticket price and know that they're across the other ticket price, and they think this event is not for me. It's not for our family. We cannot swing this. And I just want to make sure that we are doing everything we possibly can to make sure that every kid who wants to go to Prom can go to Prom. Um, and I I I'm grateful for your answers to questions earlier in the week. That's really helpful. Um, you you made an allusion to, I think, work that's going on for next year.
Um, yeah, Ty Garland, who is our outreach coordinator, um, out of the Department of Equity. Um, he and I have been talking and we're going to come up with a plan in the fall um because the Department of Equity did have some money that is available to help students um fund Prom. And I talked with Ty about a few different ideas on how to use that money appropriately to reach as many students as possible. Um, and we also talked about various ways that we can reach out to partners in the community, um, whether it's through like ironing dresses, um, Sol Parker connected me with someone that can do makeup. Um, so Ty and I are in the fall, when we have plenty of time to get all of this stuff in place, um, we're gonna work together to make sure all those pieces are in place so that we start promoting um um in January, February, that we have these options available to students.
And and those are the things available that will um will communicate to all families so they know that those opportunities are available? That's great.
Yeah, that's actually, yeah.
That's great. Thank you.
You said in your responses to the questions that uh Mr. Garland had forty four group tickets to give away.
He, fifteen of those come from my um, my budget, but it been the rest were all, yeah, Mr. Garland's this year. And then Mr. Garland and I talked about that, you know what, I think a better use of that money instead of giving free tickets, like how how can we make it a reduced price ticket to reach more students and use that money in a different way?
Have those forty four tickets actually been?
Yes, 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 yeah.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's it's my understanding that uh, that the the hundred and ten dollar cost doesn't fully fund the cost. And that there has to be some fundraising?
No, it fully funds.
It does.
Yes, 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 yes. So, um, we end up actually paying my buy it after, um, because there's there's various fees that go along, um, with each price of the ticket. We actually end up at about a hundred and five per person. Um, but then there's fees for the DJ and operations, various things like that. Um, so no, a hundred and ten fully covers the cost. Okay.
Um, so what's the, um, then, so the kind of app for student contract extension?
Sure, I, this is I a one year extension to our uh uh first student contract for um our athletic charter and field trip routes. Uh, uh, to provide a little background summary, uh, we've, I I know we've talked about the kind of the bus driver market a lot over the last two years. Um, and it's always a hot topic amongst school business officials in terms of, are you going to bid? Is this the right year to go out to bid where the districts that do go to bid, where they seen those prices come in at? Um, given that we're still seeing a lot of companies not get to the staffing level they need to get to to run uh their routes adequately, uh, uh, what the market is seeing is either um non-aggressive, pretty high bids coming in, or um, a couple of companies out there um bidding and then not being able to staff to the level to meet their contract. Uh, and that means uh routes are canceled or significantly delayed um at a greater uh scale than normal. Uh, it would mean uh field trips get canceled after they've been paid for, or they arrive late to field trips. Um, athletic competitions consistently arriving late to um, or students arriving late to the competition. Um, and in some cases, uh, given sunlight requirements, possibly not being able to compete on that date. Uh, we've found that, you know, it not that we haven't had our hiccups with first student, um, but uh they've been a a good partner. We have been uh pretty consistent and reliable with them. Um, and we've been able to troubleshoot a lot of the problems we've had, um, especially since Mr. Thomas has uh joined us here. Uh, they uh, uh, oftentimes, you can get a deal for where uh, uh, your current provider would come in during a bid by their first offer of an extension. Um, first student's offer was uh just over three and a half times what we have agreed on here. Uh, and um, but that it's it's usually a pretty good tell of where they think they need to be to become profitable. And that's usually where the bids come in, it's not at a a break even point, but at where they really feel comfortable in the profit that they're making. Uh, Mr. Thomas did a great job of telling them that their number was unacceptable. Uh, they went back and forth and we're bringing in uh five point seven uh percent renewal, which will bring the price from seventy dollars per route to seventy four. Uh, and uh, um, given where we're at and where other districts have seen their bids come in, um, and then some of the service issues we've talked about, uh, and then, and for other districts, I I don't want to I don't want to go into a lot of detail about their contracts, um, because I don't want every contract in and of itself is unique. Um, you know, so I wouldn't want another district to feel that we're speaking down to a district or um speaking poorly about a provider out there uh that maybe one day improves their service and would be a great partner for us. Um, but we feel this was not a good year to go to bid, and uh we feel very comfortable with um the numbers that we're reading forward.
So can you, can you share anything with us about, I mean, you would estimate that if we went out to bid, bids would probably come back at somewhere eighty five dollars at 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 an hour, um?
I I'd say eighty five at a minimum.
At a at a minimum?
Yep.
Is that based on conversations with other schools, districts, or peers? Is that based on what on other schools, how many guys have been seen recently been bid?
Both, I I usually when I try to do my estimating of what I think if we went to bid, it would be, and I can't say this is any kind of an exact science, but um I look at uh the market as a whole in terms of where bids coming in. I look at um who's winning the bids and then the level of service, um, are they meeting their level of service? Uh, and then also with your current provider, it's um, you know, usually their first offer tends to be if you say, no, we're going to bid, you don't often see them then bid a lower number. Now, they may lose the bid on itself, but that's usually the numbers they stick to.
Would you be able to put a little meat on this balance for four in the last two weeks and uh maybe provide us with a couple of samples of other districts that have lost a bid in the last year?
Sure.
And what those rates actually are? I I I'm sure your instincts are right and that this isn't the time to go out to bid. Um, but just seeing seeing some evidence of that, I think would be would be useful.
Yes, a hundred percent.
Questions, right? Not really, more kind of a statement, a question is, you know, I'm one who's been a first person in these situations. And um the the last thing you want is your kids standing at the corner of East and Lake Street, six thirty in the morning in ten degree weather, waiting for a bus to show up. Then they're going to see this guy. Uh, first student is a reliable vendor, uh, much more reliable than uh previous operators that we've had. And um the five point seven percent increase, I think, is considered what to what we've seen in the past. Uh, and when we have one of those a bit, and uh that seems to be relatively moderate, although it, you know, is high in only terms of inflation. Uh, but this is one of those areas uh that there's there's, there there are a few different um factors that will pressure on that, you know? The biggest one, recent, over the last, it's more than two years, it's gone back, I I could probably go say seven, eight years, is the uh, uh, the shortage of drivers. And the fact that that first uh student is able to to have a staff of drivers, to be able to have drivers that are valuable, they get our kids to and from their events and activities. Uh, I I think it is uh, it is a major factor, considering the cost.
So, yeah, I would I would agree. I'd say, um, you know, and again, this is not a comment to disparage any other transportation provider out there because everybody's, you know, similar to any sector of business. Everybody has their own ways to retain employees. Um, but having um gotten to work with first student at my private district in here and watched what they what they tried to do to keep their own drivers during um the pandemic and then post pandemic. Uh, I think they've done a very good job of not having their drivers fault. There there was a period of time where it felt like whoever was offering the three thousand dollar sign on bonus would get people for a year. And then the next year, somebody else would offer and everybody would leave and people were jumping ship. Uh, and first student, instead of trying to really, not that they don't get their sign on bonuses, but they found other ways to keep their drivers and improve their culture. Uh, and I think they've done a good job of that.
Uh, is this the kind of area where pooling um contract uh with other districts would leverage a Russian price?
I, this, transportation is one that's really difficult to uh to have a cooperative purchasing. Um, there's, there's some districts, and it's not extremely common. Um, the Glenbar system and their feeder districts would be the closest one to us where they um they purchase as a group where the elementaries and the high school purchase together. Um, it it's um uh, I think if you ask them, there's some benefits they see from it, but there's also sometimes can create a system of habit and have nots. Uh, one area that would make us not an ideal partner for our um elementary districts is that we have the uh public transportation exemption here. So we don't have the daily routes of school buses. Uh, and it may mean that, you know, in order to get into an agreement of that nature, we could be looking at something, one, we we could be looking at something, one, we'd have to all go to bed and and we could lose our provider who has done a good job for us, which if it saved money and somebody else provided the same service for lower costs is um always an acceptable solution. But um it also would be a significant cost for us that is not uh projected to um to have to take on the daily routing of transportation um for uh student drop off. I think also uh it would be somewhat of a logistical nightmare during the construction of having school buses nonstop circling the the building itself. Uh I I don't see a way that we could, we could do that effectively.
If I could add to that as well?
Oh, I got a question.
Thank you. If I could add to that as well, I think the logistics part is is the biggest factor and and that being a nightmare, I think when you have multiple schools with different bell signs, different um, you know, days of service, it would pose a problem for any any carrier to try to manage all of that. And in fact, or any of these schools have to do with either internal routing and things of that nature. Running the big problems with that. Uh timing wise, I think the other portion, just as I pointed to just manpower. So when you talk about you have schools that may have bell signs that are fifteen, twenty, thirty minutes uh difference. I dealt with that in my previous district where we had our other schools and also had private schools per uh per uh state law. And trying to mesh those when you have uh private sector schools or private schools that say, well, our bell signs are this. And it's just too close. It just causes havoc and we consistently have late routes. We're trying to build in incentives and, you know, or or incentives or or, you know, damages in 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 late service and things of that nature. You just, it just causes such issues trying to prove and recruit those type of things. So I think it did, it would, we, if we were to look into something like that, it would probably scare off a lot of carriers.
Is there a line in the budget for this type of transportation?
Yes.
And do you know the what it's budgeted, the budgeted level?
Uh so this year, I'm I definitely pulled the notes um here. I can say we we likely are coming pretty under budget. We um we've talked about um for our new board members, um uh when we talked about this extension at this time last year. Um we we knew we were over budgeting a little bit for charter routes because we didn't know the impact of project two on the need for the charter busing. Uh you know, how much could we do on our own campuses still? Uh you would we be able to practices and and our athletics department has just done an incredible job of figuring all of that out. Uh we uh in the uh first student uh budget line that this would come out of, it routes with um if we, you know, uh for example, our uh band may take a a when they went on the overseas trip, they took um transportation to the airport, but they didn't do it through for a student. They did it through a charter company um because they needed more space for the equipment. Um all of that goes into a co-curricular transportation line. Uh uh I'd have to pull that exact number up. Um the number that's sitting in my head, but I I say again, I'm I'm remembering and not confirming is about five hundred and seventy thousand, and I think will come in pretty significantly under that, um probably to the tune of six figures.
Really quick, um the memo makes reference to a CPI renewal of five point seven percent, but CPI really doesn't have anything to do with this, right?
We do look at um uh CPI, but similar to, and I forget the exact terminology off the top of my head here. Uh there's a CPI that calls out transportation and fuel increases. Uh uh so it will always differ from the CPIU. Uh similar to when we look at CPI food for our uh anything we're doing with food services compared to um the CPIU. Um but I'll confirm that percentage.
It's not 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 that big of a deal. They went to seventy-four bucks from seventy.
Yeah.
Happens to work out to five point seven percent increase, but is it really tied to some CPI measurement? Because in either case, that's see five months' hours higher than higher than CPI. Question, surcharge fees for booking three days and under. Do we ever end up getting hit with that and how much is that?
Uh we do, we have seen uh that we do get hit with that from time to time. It's not very often. I think our our staff is really good about getting uh getting their uh transportation request into us in time, or we don't see that. Um uh unfortunately, we do see with with our system, we've seen some hiccups where forms haven't come through privately and it's in that forty-eight hours to twenty-four hour window or uh we see someone that really needs this trip, some trips academic in nature that they're taking. So we we have seen some last interest, but it's it's a relatively small percentage. Uh I mean, since I've been here in October, I can probably count on my hand that times that's happened, you know.
How much is it? I was curious.
It's a hundred dollars.
Good. One other thing to note with that and then also with the um the charge for running during kind of their peak times of operating when other districts are missing. Uh those prices have not increased in this extension. Um so those have been there and will remain there, but they're not going up. Sorry.
Mr. Thomas, I think we've been hearing some complimentary things about you and your engagement of our transportation services, so um that's great to have you here with us and keep up the good work.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Um and with that, we will move on from uh my exception to our policy discussion. Um and Greg, can I ask you just it's framed with the press plus policy for the first grade three is for department members and then we'll talk about this patch?
Yeah, so I was gonna go a little view of things. So we do have a flight, so every so often every year when policies need to be uh updated because of changes to the law, state code, various things, uh press process, agencies that work with, updates for policies, fix and on for consideration. So we have a rather large flight here. But with a few exceptions, uh the policies that are labeled under the banner of draft updates are really there for two reasons. Number one, because there's a rewritten policy two two six five for title by agreements. Uh that's in there. This is because uh we are reverting back to, or we are reverting back to the twenty twenty regulations for title lines opposed to twenty twenty four regulations that uh caused the change to the policy. So reverting back then, you said reference in various policies throughout. The second is that uh there's a brand new policy uh seventy five five regarding students who are parents expected to pass statements in exceptional files. And that is uh a standard policy that is also cross-referenced in other policies that are that that are draft updates. For the exception of that, um there is uh a few of the small things I perhaps of 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 note uh that came independently, you know, from inside the district is a revision policy four twenty that is meant to better capture what actually is going on in CFC versus uh what has been in that in that language. Uh so that's that's really the run of it.
And and to frame this for Josh and Catherine, we've uh in the last school year, we we instituted um a board committee, um a policy committee. So um Audrey and myself and Sarah and after the last six months along with Dr. Johnson, um Roxanne Sanders, um uh with uh both on the Apple whites. I don't remember again.
Oh, Andrew, no, Andrew.
Sorry, Andrew. Um.
Yeah, I'll handle it.
And then also input from um Tony, from Principal Parker, from anybody in the in the leadership team who whose areas um might be impacted by that policy change, we get uh feedback from them. The and the policy committee sits and we go policy by policy and we'll vet and try to talk through to support all of these changes that are that are being uh given to us by the state. Um are there impacts, you know, on our operations that we should be aware of, other communications impacts?
Yeah, and then in short, right? So with through that process, what we have, we have uh all of the policies listed here are ones that are admin team and the policy committee recognized for approval with the exception of policy seven sixty residents and um that we are admin team and the policy committee uh both, you know, and I think they're not making those divisions. It it opens a door for exceptions to uh the residency rules that already in place. Uh that has been an area of focus for us in the district for quite some time. And uh you know, we 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 allocate resources for residency and uh the current practices and guidelines that are in place are ones that we would like to maintain uh without all of these doors and it was recommended also changes now required by statute or or any of type of required change. So.
So that's the framing for our discussion is that this the the entire set of policy proposals have been vetted by policy committee. Policy committee is making its recommendation that we go forward with all the one with the residency one that Greg just described. Um and so I think just to to have a useful conversation, are there any specific proposed policies that any of you have questions about? Um rather than, I mean, we we have a policy committee in place, so that we don't have to go through these one by one.
But or that connected, just to ask a question. So these changes come from, these changes come from uh, some changes come from press and some come from the policy committee? Separate?
None are generated by policy committee?
No, then I know we have an event.
Not this fight.
Not this fight. Uh so what what I was gonna ask is as we go forward with these kind of things, that it that we use a a different color highlight for those that do come from the policy. So that we can differentiate what is press and what is, you know, internal policy committee. And it would just, I think it's here for us. Because right now, none of these are internally generated. We know that every other school district has a two point two six old grievance procedures.
Yeah, same thing. You know what actually we can do, I'm just gonna, I I I appreciate that for clarity and what what's due. We have these major headings, right, throughout the script. One is draft updates, draft updates, rewritten policies, and then draft updates that are branded. We could have another one that was, you know, draft updates internally developed, whether it's by the policy committee or by some of them, internally generated. That's that's yeah, with current and transfers.
That would be the case with the change to the CFC discretion, right?
Yeah, that's exactly right. Yeah, that's the only one in here. Unless I'm forgetting something, I don't believe I am. I think it's the only one that follows that.
So on the CFC committee, I just want to clarify that the policy change is not that there's no alteration to the deference with respect to determination or recommendations, CFC, it's just to reflect the procedural posture that the committee is operating today.
The buck around. As a second.
I have a question. Um so is this only like the change in policy only gonna impact staff? What was somehow made for the problems for students to wanna like report anything? Or I mean, it's not understanding to come?
Are you referring to the uh changes to the uniform grievance procedure? Or is there specific policies generally left any of them?
Like just someone, because you're changing the title nine.
Yeah.
And then if I'm wondering if that's gonna make the management harder for students and employees.
Yeah, no, the 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 um a lot of this involves um uh adults in the building carrying policies to them, but uh how we communicate how complaints can be uh provided and and acted upon, none of that is going to is going to change or become more cumbersome. We just really need to be aligned, who has been responsible for which stages in the process along the way to align with the law. This doesn't change accessibility of the policy for our students, but thanks.
Thanks.
Good question. Yeah, it's great. So so I noticed, I I just want to point out, I I've noticed that in several of these, there's the change of the name from a uh non the non-discrimination coordinator to a title nine coordinator. Nothing i- is changing. It's just the the title of that position.
Yeah, Roxanne, do you want to add clarity to that? Um but that that's that's right. It's just um the same person is just different, but it's.
Yeah, you say it will be handled by one banner, now it needs to be teased out by two. Roxanne will will do a better job of clarifying that to me.
Yeah, i- i- it's it's not really replacing one with another. It's just now we have to list two roles. We we see the clarification from our legal advisor that both roles would be fulfilled by the same person. Uh so we currently have Janelle Bishop as our title nine coordinator. So we will update everything in the policy to as far as a title nine coordinator and a non-discrimination coordinator.
The artificial intelligence policy. What's the number on that? I want to put to uh six point or two, three, five, six, seven, five. Of course, piece of artificial intelligence getting to us. Since a press recommendation. Or how does this like a a new venture for 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 many of us? You know, are have we are are we concerned around by council as far as the risks that that goes to to the district and, you know, so wholly various, so so, you know, whenever we talk policy, this is
Yeah, it's a great question. We haven't run this policy specifically. By legal, we we had some of the other universal grievance stuff that Roxanne, which is starting to pass. We do have a committee uh internally that has looked at this a little bit, but there is um work here that is going to need to be stood on as a result of specifically as it relates to the threshold and so on with the policy, so. We haven't run about legal, we couldn't, I guess, if it's not your question. Yeah.
Well, I just know, Josh, this is a a topic that we talked about this how over the past year. It's not a window that is a really fast moving area, and also it's really difficult to 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 policy that's gonna be here active for more than a short amount of time. Um that's, you know, if we adopt it, that's gonna be part of the challenge for the super attendings. As, you know, trying to formulate something that's flexible and up to it to allow. Um but that that's gonna be changed. Um I I think this is a a thing that every district in the state is struggling with. Um and one of the things that we made with the the committee meeting last week was there's not a timeline attached to this, we've got a deadline attached to formulating a plan. Um I think there's probably gonna be a lot of communication between superintendents about this and best practices shared. Um and uh but but I but I think that it is a a move in the right direction. We and districts ought to have um policies in place that govern this. Um so it's 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 directionally, I I I think, correct. Um it's gonna be, you know, but I I definitely I don't want to uh to form like that. And so these um this packet of press plus changes will connect us in two weeks for the
Yeah, for second read and bookroom.
So let's move on to six B, uh additions to the state school zone resolution.
Yeah, thanks. So this was a resolution that was passed under sixteen seventeen school year by the board and um few parts of it were um you know, effectively obsolete. Um but additionally, we heard uh from some students earlier this school year, uh a recommendation to make some changes that it's so our policy committee reviewed those recommendations uh during our meeting and that's what you see reflected here. You know, an update to language in a in a in a in a few cases, but uh and also, you know, a continuation that we write, you know. So um.
And this is the version, right, that is uh is the markup from our attorneys?
Yeah, our attorneys have reviewed this uh initially. I think what I will do is pen this conversation. I'll 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 um make sure this goes to a final review before we bet. Uh given the nature of the topic, it's uh, you know, so it's a, it's a tiny one. Yes, right, yes.
Yeah, I think I'm not the only one that broke most here when this was originally asked. And yeah, I think you are. And there was a lot of conversation and coordination with the uh with our other public. Our other public entities at that point in time. Um, and I'm wondering, have any of the in uh other districts too, ninety seven, ninety? What they had done. Um, so my question is, has there been any communication with with our? Our other districts or other public public entities that that um. That had asked uh a resolution similar to this at that time?
I have not done that, not village of ninety seven or anybody like that, no.
Cause I'd be interested to see, to hear if there are, i- i- if they are going through a revision at this point in time, is allowed.
Would that, just to be clear, uh, and then I I maybe as a question for the board as a whole, then, is that something that you would like to do before you feel comfortable moving on for a second read? And about?
No, not, I I don't think I need to hear uh before a second read.
Okay.
All right, but I think it's something that, uh, you know, we can always come back and then again, we have to.
All right, fair.
But I think it's, you know, uh, I mean, that that point in time, I'm I'm just saying is that we were, there was a lot of being important on a talk.
Understood. Thanks. I didn't I didn't know that, okay.
But I think going back to twenty seventeen, the the part came before us, um, adopted all the provisions.
Right.
And I guess at the same time as as we're off.
Yeah, yeah.
All of that was happening within months of each other.
Right, and so and so really, I mean, we've just been asked by our our students to read from what we did.
Right, so you're saying we should be clear then as a result, updated language, sure, um, there's the language specifically about the century, you know, say school. That that the sanctuary status of of schools, that has changed anyway, and so that that is updated with this. Um, other than that, though, you know, this this resolution remains in effect for the school district, so this is, this isn't a a brand new thing at this point. It's like, clear, find it.
Yeah, that's, it's, you know, a lot of it, the language has like just changed, but it's. Same, that's right, refrain never, so it's stuff like that seems, I think, I guess, it's. Major part of the citizens that's that's stronger, um, perhaps that was something from the same time to be, yeah.
So I I have, I think, two questions. The first one is the title. So if safe zone is being struck from bullet number one about the type of policy, should it still be called the school safe zone resolution? Or should it be called like a sanctuary campus resolution or something?
So I have no suggestion to hear. It seems so obvious. I think we should have done already.
And then the second question, well, actually, I have two more questions. One is. So I think never inquire is probably right and like that, except is there no situation when you would ever need to know, um? Documentation status, rest.
I was thinking about that.
Is that really strong?
For track one, but that's probably the expression status. It's a sense, it's the same, it's the same.
I think that the nuance is is right. We are not allowed, right, by law, to have to to inquire about this.
Hmm.
And so that distinction there probably is this is is the important one.
Right.
So that's why the language is as concrete as this, but uh, given this conversation, that's another reason to read that with our attorneys. See what they say on that front, okay?
Yeah, and then my other question is, there's sort of nothing here about um data retention. So even if we never inquire and are are careful, there still may be cases where we learn. Or where the, you know, faculty or staff or administration may learn of documentation status.
Sure.
And so I think it might also be helpful to have a bullet point, which is. Don't retain any records related to immigration status. And also the numbering is wonky.
What, seven, I'm looking for. Um, the I guess, also the question as far as the volunteers. Uh, I know it's currently in the policy, um, to what degree of control do we have over a volunteer parent? Say, asking a question or, you know, to that degree, that's. Uh, are we educating them ahead of time about the school policy of specifically, right? Do something for that.
Um, Roxanne, can you speak to that process with any sort of, I mean, I know when we have about, there are different levels of volunteer depending on how frequently they are working with the district, right? It is possible to give a volunteer who comes in for a day to see a class. That's fundamentally different to somebody who decides that they're going to go overseas. Along with the group of students, right? Uh, do you want to speak to that at all, Roxanne?
I normally speak to the process that we use to screen volunteers, making sure that they are sort of uh. To be around our students, um, and so anyone maybe uh alone with our students uh is required to go through a background check. But I cannot uh say correctly what the process is, uh, informing them what's to, what kind of questions they can ask students. That we would have to gather that information from individual supervisors.
I just, I mean, I know that's, that's not a change, right? That's already in in the policy currently, so they'll. Will not be an answer agency, right, against volunteers.
So what what is the, I understand the green, you're adding the the pink here that we, what is the yellow? Why is the yellow?
Uh, I can go back to the original, I can have you on one second, so. Not new, attorney. Lisa, when you, um, when you translated this over to this document, can you recall how those those different colors, especially the yellow and the pink, how? You know, I'm looking at the original document we got, like, it doesn't track what I have there either, so.
So all, everything in green is supposed to be yellow.
Is that right?
Yeah, I think it is. I think I don't know how to fill in, change like this, so.
Oh, there we go.
My bad. And as far as the numbering, I list the numbers that the um, the changes were made, so if you click on the link. You see one, there's changes in three, four, nothing in five, six, changes in seven. See, that's why the numbering is. And instead of me putting the answer.
Oh, I see what you do.
Resolution. I just put the numbers where the stuff was changed.
Got it.
So I'm still glad I brought you to the conversation, eight sevens.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask then for item number seven, that says, district two hundred shall take all possible preventative action actions. That's highlighted in yellow. It it feels super broad, um, but you're saying that this language has been replaced for a while. And it makes me wonder, what exactly are we asking our staff to do? Does the staff have explicit, this kind of explicit direction?
Well, that that the yellow, right, so the take all possible ground of it, was there? The max maximum extent, I guess. So maximum extent you two are here is that you're. So you have a question.
And I'm not asking for a specific edit or something like that, I'm just. Ob- observing the the breadth of that, and then also probably seven needs of just a bit of words, I think. It says, tell, take, take all preventive action to the maximum stem extent of the law. I'm assuming you mean permitted by law. And then, and then it follows with three different scenarios. Enforcement official attempts to arrest, get information about a student's immigration status. Or enter school property, but that business about should an immigration enforcement official attempt to arrest a student? On district property, I'm assuming is intended there. Because the way this is written. You're asking staff to then make interventions off off of our campus. And I'm not sure if that's what is intended here. Should we say, make clear in the first sentence that we're talking about on school property? I I think seven just needs word smoothing or more precision.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I don't think that this should be limited to school property. I think it should be. Should be extended to school activities. So what happens if you're, you're taking a a group of uh frisbee players to.
Launching, yeah.
Um, and. And the action occurs there, and so I think this this should be directly giving direction to our, our staff of volunteers.
Yeah, and that's a good, that's a good scenario, but you know, so that's another example, maybe a little more precision if we're really gonna expect our staff to conduct themselves by this. And and my last question on item seventeen is, shall additionally provide appropriate training? Do we do that? And what does that look like? There's seventy, I'm worried, are we really doing seventeens?
But that would be good, right? So it seems beautiful.
Absolutely, language, that's right. So some of what we were talking about, like the AI policy, right, there are areas here that 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 could be stood up. Right now, what we've done is we provide kind of information and train to those folks who are most likely to. Interact with such a situation, right, those are security, so those who are in various stores, we include the dock workers, you know, things like that. But providing that exact same information to, you know, others around the district, would be have this next step.
Okay, so the answer to my first question of what is yellow highlighting, that's the brand new language that the attorneys put in or the 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 committee put in?
Yes, right, okay, that's right.
I have one more question.
Sure.
Which is, is there any similar policy for staff, like about not inquiring about documentation for staff? For example, DACA staff members, so do you also have a policy about non inquiry around staff immigration status?
I mean, it's not. I wanna make sure, we we've gone a few times in the conversation, but when we're, and it's confusing because the word policy is a common word.
Yeah.
You're really talking about in district practices or procedures rather than policy that we're talking about here, or are you talking about board policy that governs such things? See my question?
Yeah, I I'm not sure. I think it's a general question, which is, is there also protections, are there also protections in place for staff whose immigration status may be?
Well, we can all hide them.
She says.
If under DACA, we could. Under different action from child arrivals policies, and I mean, people who have more eligibility, who would be on the staff of the district, who may also be undocumented, except through DACA. Somebody could have something to cover then.
Perfect. That's a great question, Ken, when I, when I, we'll take that back to our attorneys.
That needs to go back to the attorneys for sure.
There also seems to be um the need for um, you know, a lot of the the language that they added uh around reviewing and updating is is pretty. Not specific as well, so I think if there's any way that we can establish an actual cadence to what that looks like, what does the consistent? Ongoing review of this rapidly changing um topic, what's that look like? And what can we expect as a board um for that to come to and and be on our plate, so that we can look at it and make sure that it is. Adequately up to date and, you know, and that same language should be included with, you know, how we describe, um, you know, providing appropriate training, you know. You you monitor this rapidly changing situation and adjust our trainings accordingly to best practices or what we identify as best practices and so on, so.
So we're, you know, there are a few things there, and so possible, possible, we can have this back for review in two weeks. But possibly not, depending on, uh, you know, how the conversations unfold between how, but we will bring this back for us.
I thought that we can, I feel the students really brought the emphasis on this, and then a lot of students started to issue the business to the, the big school year. Districts.
Great discussion, good, really good suggestions. Um, so let's move on to our next agenda item, um, under policy C, board governance. Uh, and this has Williams Lee uh next to it on our on our agenda. Audrey. Um, did you want to speak to board governance at all tonight, or we want, do we want to leave this for until our next meeting?
Yeah, let's leave it until our next meeting, Tim.
Okay, we'll do. Um, and we will move on to, I have a future agenda, future agenda items. Um, anybody have a future agenda item today?
So I do have, um, you know, like, I do think that, um, this should probably. Go down as a future agenda item, but we we discussed um mentoring for our our student, uh.
Okay.
Um, our student representatives, I think it really boos us to establish, uh, to take a step back and establish a mentoring protocol. Bring the best, a shared protocol and curriculum according to best practices instead of just winging it. Um, I think it's a, I I really think that that it'd be wise to do so, so I'd like to put that out there on future agenda items.
What's uh, what's the adjournment and what's? Special, I tend to grant those who are to adjourn, can we, sorry, nope, sorry, my box is. Um, I'm going to adjourn, can we the whole meeting at nine sixteen P M? Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The opposed, can we adjourn? And then we'll move right into our special.
Right. Nine in, this is saying.
For order, special board meeting at nine seventeen o'clock in the boardroom of Osada High School, this is all.
Mr. Gerst.
Here.
Dr. Livingston.
Here.
Mr. Brisbane.
Here.
Mr. Arkin.
Here.
Dr. Odell.
Here.
Mr. Brandhouse.
Here.
And Miss Williams Lee.
Here.
First item on our agenda, the public comments, please, anybody sign up for public comments?
None.
We'll move on to our action items. I'm going to approve the following action items. Uh, approval of personnel recommendations, including new hire list, rate measures, assignment changes, summer school hires, resignations, and releases. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Uh, Lisa, please call the roll.
Mr. Arkin.
Yes.
Mr. Berks.
Yes.
Dr. Livingston.
Yes.
Dr. Odell.
Yes.
Mr. Brandhouse.
Yes.
Mr. Brisbane.
Yes.
Miss Williams Lee.
Yeah.
I am the approval of administrator of non licensed director contacts for the twenty twenty five, twenty six school year, do I hear a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Please call the roll.
Dr. Livingston.
Yes.
Mr. Brisbane.
Yes.
Mr. Gerst.
Yes.
Dr. Odell.
Yes.
Mr. Brandhouse.
Yes.
Mr. Arkin.
Yes.
Miss Williams Lee.
Yeah.
Um, and with that, we will adjourn. I'm going to adjourn the special meeting at nine eighteen P M. Do I hear a second?
Seven.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I have any opposed?
Aye.
And we adjourn.